So let's move to roll call, please.
Councilmember Hudson. Councilmember McKenzie.
Here.
Councilmember Simmons.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bata Cavoli.
Here.
And Mayor Sam Iowat.
Here. And I'd like to ask folks to please put your hand over your heart and help me with the pledge of allegiance. Ready pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and just for all. Thank you, everyone. Are there any changes to the agenda, Ms. Brown?
To the agenda.
With that, are there any closed session reports, Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, there is no closed session report.
Thank you, sir. With that, we have a presentation recognizing Volunteer Recognition Week between 4/19 and 4/25 2020. I'd like to read the, the, the actual declaration, and then we'll have Chief Sacks say a few words afterwards. The City of Marysville declares the week of April 1920 and through the 25th, 2020 as National Volunteer Week in the City of Marysville. Whereas volunteering is a creative use of human resources for recreation on, of a healthy, productive, and human society. And where its experiences teaches us that government by itself cannot solve all of our city's problems. And the volunteering has become essential to the growth and well-being of the City of Marysville. And whereas Marysville Police Volunteers truly care and share generously of themselves, transforming limited resources into limitless possibilities. And whereas volunteerism is a fundamental element that allows, that allows the Marysville Police Department to accomplish its mission to reduce the fear and occurrence of crime and engage citizen participation. And whereas Marysville Police Volunteers enthusiastically donate 1,211 hours in 2019 to the City of Marysville. Now therefore be a resolved that the City Council of the City of Marysville calls upon all citizens to recognize and commend all the volunteers in our community for their service. Chief Sacks.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for the proclamation for the volunteers for the City of Marysville Police Department. As stated here, over 1,200 hours of volunteer service this year so far, so they are definitely a value and an asset to the organization and the city itself for all the tremendous work that they do for us for free. So I commend them once again for everything that they've done.
Thank you, Chief, and please send our best to our volunteers. I know how valuable they are to us, and they keep us in check too when they need to.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks. So at this point, I'd like to ask members of the community, individuals wishing to address the City Council concerning consent calendar items or on matters not on the agenda. We invite you to make comments of up to three minutes. We ask you to please raise your hand via Zoom when you're called by our city clerk. You will be unmuted and you can address the City Council. Please state your name clearly for the audio recording. You're requested to address your comments to us, the council, and not to the audience. We do let you know that by state law, the councils are permitted to undertake any actions or discussions on any items not appearing on a posted agenda. If you have already documentations that you would like to distribute to the council, we ask you to please mail those to the city clerk at 526 C Street in Marysville. Any members of the public have comments? Seeing no one raises any hand, or if you want to raise your hand, any member of the public to make a comment. We'll give folks a couple of seconds. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to move forward to public comment. I'm a little confused here. Oh, public commentary, consent calendar, because we are virtually setting, we will have one roll call vote for the city clerk for all items on the consent calendar. Unless an item is pull. If an item is a pull, each item will have a roll call vote. Want to let you know that all matters and consent agenda are considered to be routine and therefore approved by one motion unless council member, city manager first requested a matter be removed. What's the will of the council?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Motion by Councilmember McKenzie. Second by Council Vice Mayor Bata Cavoli. Roll call, please. Nicole, can you roll call for the vote?
Councilmember Hudson.
Here, yes.
Councilmember McKenzie. Councilmember Simmons. Vice Mayor Bata Cavoli.
Hi.
Mayor Sam Iowat.
Hi, thank you. Let's move to public hearing. Item number four. This is a study session to update cannabis tax for November 3rd, 2020 election ballot. The recommendation from staff is to open to public hearing and receive public comments regarding an update to the City Marysville Measures F Cannabis Tax. And two, pass a motion waiving the first reading and introduction of the ordinance amending the current voter approved Measure F of cannabis tax. And three, pass a motion waiving the first reading and introduction ordinance to amend Title V of the Marysville Municipal Code entitled Business Licensing Regulations. And to amend Chapter 5.12 entitled Marijuana Business Tax. Ms. Brown?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. The item that is before you this evening for the study session is to talk about putting on a new cannabis tax on the ballot for this November. As you may recall, the current Measure F Cannabis Tax in the City of Marysville does not include any taxation for any other activities except retail dispensary and indoor grow. And so this new tax would, or proposed new tax would cover other activities that are allowed for in the City of Marysville's cannabis ordinance, including volatile extraction, manufacturing, edible manufacturing, as well as lab testing. So with that, we wanted to bring this forward. It's also actually given us an opportunity to reevaluate the cannabis industry and kind of where things stand in terms of taxation throughout the state. And so there's some additional proposals to the current Measure F tax as well. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to David McPherson of HDL, who helped draft the ordinance and the tax, the proposed tax measure. And he's going to walk you through those proposed changes at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Maury. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. As, as the city manager kind of outline of what the current Measure F does not include, a part of that to keep in mind as well as we go through the presentation is that the measure at the time when it was being developed in the end of 2015 to beyond 2016, it did, there was only like 20 to 25 cities and counties at the time that even adopted some kind of tax. And we didn't even have an industry regulated or developed mature yet. So there's a lot of things that have evolved in the last four years since the development of that Measure F. And as she indicated, some of the activities are manufacturing, testing lab, and distribution, but also just clarity of how to address the deliveries and some of the rules of inner businesses that deal with each other. And some of the definitions that have changed, not only in state regulations, but also interpretation of them. So with that said, I would like to start with the PowerPoint. Nicole can put it up on the screen. So as we outline, go through this, this evening, is the focus of really this ordinance, as we shared with you, is to kind of be, you know, look at different revenue strategies. Want to look at the legal market, illegal market, things of that nature. We'll go through some of the outlines of that. And then future trends of things that are occurring, as I mentioned to you, that being strategic on that. And then the overview of the proposed ordinance, just kind of a layout of it. And then the rates themselves and why we, we, we were going to talk about those at the end of a cumulative tax. And then the next steps that the city manager is asking direction for. Next slide. Next slide.
I'm sorry, David, would you mind speaking up?
We're just waiting for the slide. Here we go. So the first thing is being proactive, you know, not only at the time you want to deal with just adult use, medical use, which I think you clearly understand those two. It's really also looking at any illegal activity that may occur out there, but also address legislative changes that are occurring with different types of processes or types of activities related to the cannabis industry. And then regulatory changes as well. As you knew that the local control in Prop 64 was to address deliveries. But as you know, the regulations changed clearly and defined it differently, even though there's lawsuits associated with this. Is that want to be clear and definitive of how to approach that, not only from registering the businesses that come into your community, but also taxing them. And making it clear so there's no vagueness in the ordinance where the other one, even though civil activities were taxed, this clearly specifies it specifically for out of town business as well. And then we also briefly talked last time that I was in front of you was that there are new regulations being developed, new products, manufacturing, where hemp is starting to come into play. Where cannabis businesses will have the ability to actually have hemp products in their facilities. And we're starting to see some of that, even though it's not regulated yet, is starting to be part of the business models of that activity. And so your current ordinance actually does not have that as a taxable activity. This gives you that flexibility to have it as a taxable activity in the future trend. And so trying to, you know, try to be mindful of what's happening to the industry as far as tax rates when they were high, high, high rates. As yours, your Measure F was at the time, is that no one realized how the impact of Prop 64 and the excise tax is going to accumulate between the cultivators and the retail is almost 25% of the total tax. And so trying to look at that, be equitable, and you go to have your business sustainable is what this is trying to look at and address. Next slide, please. Without the measure, well, as I mentioned, address technology, as we're seeing some very unique things being done through some technology activity strategies where you have businesses that might have you go to a store in your city or any retail store, use the thing just like when you were getting videos and purchase stuff and then have someone drop it off in front of you as you're leaving the store or even an area. So this addresses some of that criteria. And then some of the restrictions gives you the flexibility on the different types of activities for manufacturing. And then any behavior change, what will be interesting at COVID of how behavior changes. Many cities did not allow deliveries, but they allowed retail into things. Midstream, they had a mission for businesses to do that. And then taxing activity, and then even businesses that were looking at different models and being creative and making sure that your tax would actually capture that activity. Gives the flexibility for these trends. Next slide, please. And this is just to mention back to some of the hemp related changes of why we're adding this in there is because there were bills back in 2019. This maybe 2028 was one of them. It's actually going to be modified and called something else that we will see in 2020 or 2021. The state has already created a mandate that the state and the CFA has to present and submit a hemp regulation to the federal government so that it can be permitted into cannabis businesses or even separate hemp businesses. And so this is going to be well-defined as a taxable activity should it be desired of the council. Next slide. So the ordinance is south as, as even F was, you know, it's the core of things, just like a business tax of creating all the definitions, requirements, penalties, ability to audit, and things of that nature. There's two things that are in this ordinance that are critical to you as a council, and it's really this section 3.10 amendment or modification. So I know there's some concern about tax rates, you know, being able to be adjusted or modified. The way we worded the language in here gives you a lot of flexibility as a council to modify the tax rates independently on each category or activity. Or up and down on a scale for any time that you see. And so what we're only presenting to you on the proposed as the maximum, you still have the ability to move that down should you see a desire or a need to do that. And also specifically, for example, someone may ask the question, well, you know, we have Costco's and we have GNC stores and other wellness stores that carry hemp products. Are you saying that we're going to tax them just because they carry it? The answer is no. There's flexibility in this where you can, you have the ability to adjust that and not tax every business that's carrying, you know, the minimalist or very little amount of hemp-related products, or even a big store where it was less than 5% of their gross revenues. That is not the intent of it. It's the goal to capture a store that might pop up as a CBD store. And you get no taxable activity at, or current cannabis businesses that it blends into that. This gives you the ability to amend or modify anything related to that. So the reason why last time we addressed the cultivation on a square footage, not gross receipts, is two things. Simplicity of oversight to it by knowing what that is. And second, where we found a lot of the, the agencies that did that, mostly the counties that said, well, I'm going to do it on a gross receipt. They saw actually the cultivators basically moving the product to their distributor, which they own that was in a different city and actually have no gross activity, taxable activity associated with the cultivation. So the goal of this core footage again is why it's that is one, simplicity of oversight on the calculation. Simplicity of them trying to be creative and trying to manipulate their gross revenues associated with the cultivation aspect of this. And it's a more predictable calculation for staff or a budgeting process. Next slide. So the rate of the tax, as I mentioned before, the rate of the tax becomes very critical. When in 2016, when your Measure F was adopted, the tax rate was $15 or 15% gross receipts. At the time, we were looking at 10, but staff felt at that time or the guidance or direction of discussion with council that they wanted to have a little more flexibility in that. And that rate was a little higher. As we've seen it evolve in what are the prevailing rates in an environment where there's now 135 cities and counties that are doing this. Tax rates have come down significantly. Even in 2018, when there were 60 tax measures, the range of the gross receipts were roughly 6% or lower on multiple activities. And the variation activities has come down low and we'll chat about that as well. You want the ability to match the type of activity, the type of activity that's, that is based on the type of business that they're, kind of looking at a little what's around you and their surrounding jurisdictions, kind of looking at what is the best for the stabilization of the market or industries. And so this gives you all the flexibility to address all those as time evolves in the process. Next slide, please. So the proposed rate you see here again is, is, is an industry, they're trying to look at what their worst, worst scenario is, not their best. And so on the proposed maximum rates, these are now the prevailing rates that we have seen out there, as I told you, on some of the different rates based on the types of categories. Again, these are the caps of the top. So you have the ability to bring these rates down at any time as you assess the market or the impacts of the market or the concerns of any specific category here. I know there was a mention of trying to blend these rates in. And when we show you the cumulative charts, you'll see that that's not necessarily a good idea, because everyone has a different rate at which they can be approached at. Next slide, please. I think we skipped one. So this seems to be the, maybe we have one missing. So the, again, these are the maximum rate charts that we had talked about. And what we're going to show you here is a cumulative, and this is really to look at it and examine it from a fully cumulative of all the states. As I mentioned to you, the state excise tax has a significant amount that is cumulative in here. So each, each category has a different threshold of what it's capable of paying in order to survive. Cultivation, there's almost 8,000, oh, excuse me, there's almost 4,000 cultivation license out there. They have to compete with larger market. And so when there's only 450, oh, I'm sorry, 642 retailers in California, they're moving their product to market. They have to compete with other people because there's not as much retailers out there. So it'll be very critical, cultivators and manufacturers are not paying the same prevailing rates that might be for a retailer. And so as we go through looking and examining this, and this is showing the maximum rate, and the goal is to keep this under 30%. And as you can see, even at the recommended maximum rate, you're just a tick over 30% if you even use the maximum rate for, or recommended maximum rate for each category. And that's slightly over 30%. And as we look at where we, the recommended rate or proposed, proposed, the starting rate, next slide. So when you look at here, the rates are slightly lower. And on the categories, because this is probably the recommended, recommended rates as a starting point. In your case, you've all, your retailers are already at 5% and been paying that for, for the, since their inception of being open. The retail is the one that has the highest rate because it has, it's, it's the one that has the least competition related to the other type of licensed activity. And so this, throughout California, the average rates are between 4 and 6%. That is that sweet spot. If you look at the cumulative chart here, it keeps it under 30%. And your current rate now is that 5%, which is right in between that rate, which is an acceptable rate of a current rate in today's market. Even in the area within 1% of Sacramento, that 4%, so you're right there in that, in that, that spot where, where it's at state status quo. Next slide. So the next steps is, is, is for consideration of approving the ordinance. Update the ordinance or any other direction if there's a desire to have any, anything modified into it based on the discussion that may occur. And then of course, the direction to the resolution stipulations to get this to, to the, to the election office in order to get it, get it, adopt it. And then their rates will go into effect in January of 2021. So with that, next step, next. So with that, I will hand this back over to the city manager or be more happy to answer any questions for you.
Well, I want to know if Ms. Brown has any, anything else to the presentation, or do you want us to take questions? Can you hear me? There she is. We can't, we can't hear you. Hold on, hold on. There, there you go. Go ahead.
I think if the council has any questions for David McPherson while he's on the line, probably we should start there. Mainly, I think just one thing I would, I guess, just want to have the council keep in mind is, is the caps. This is really about putting different percentages on the ballot for a cap that allows discretion on the part of the council to make decisions about moving that intro, that moving up the tax rate for different cannabis activities as needed and as the market changes. With that, other than that, I think maybe, I don't know if the council has any questions for David while he's on the line.
Okay, I saw Bruce raises his hand, Vice Mayor, and then Mr. Simmons. So we'll start with Bruce.
I'm just curious on two descriptions. What's the difference in art, why is there a difference, or what is the difference in artificial lighting versus a mixed lighting?
So artificial lighting is where like the roof here and now, it's all artificial. A mixed lighting could be where you could, for example, in, in summer, you have plenty of natural light that's using natural light. But as you kind of move into the salsas, kind of into the winter, you may use some artificial icing to augment some of the length of time that you need lighting on a cultivation facility. In most cases, it's going to be indoors in your community. But again, because we're also addressing potential illegal market, you have every category in there that possibly can exist in an environment.
More questions?
It's, it's, but it's a question, why is the rate different? Based on?
Yes, that's the real question.
Yeah, so there's two parts. One is that if you actually permitted that different activity, the rate of return of profit is different on the different types of it. So an indoor grow is a more premium hire. You can sell a wholesale at a higher rate versus a mixed light, which would typically be a greenhouse or a nursery, will have a cheaper return as far as what you can sell it for. And of course, outdoor has the lowest pricing of that as far as the value of the product.
Okay, but I, I, I'm sorry, Bruce, go ahead. I'll, I'll let you finish.
No, go ahead and follow up if you're following up with that, because I don't quite understand.
I, I guess if, if it's, if it's a, if it's a max, they won't just not have a max for all of them, and then we can choose depending on the permit.
Sure, that, that's an option that you could put in there. Again, part of the goal is, is for any operator that's considering their business model to know what the worst scenario would be for them. And so if I'm growing a nursery, or if I'm creating a nursery, or I'm creating an indoor or a mixed light grow, and I'm basing my business model based on what the rate would be, that I know what my taxability and I'm basing my business model based on what the rate would be that I know what my taxability tax activity is. And all of a sudden, a new council comes in and makes it the maximum rate, my my profitability for that type of business model will basically go out the door. I can't compete at the same profitability of someone that has a higher or different rate.
I I guess I didn't really answer my question about why different caps or max rates for different types of of growth.
So so Mayor, let's look at it this way. So I'm I'm Business A, I'm an indoor grower, and the rate today is ten dollars a square foot. Now, if you made it ten dollars a square foot for a mixed light, you go, well, we're going to reduce it. Right? Because we understand that. But then also two councils from now says, you know what? I want it to be ten dollars a square foot, that that mixed light person, and I don't like, I don't care if they like it or not. That model will not work for them as far as a taxable activity for that type of business.
Well, I think that what I, why, maybe you can explain a little bit why there is a profitability difference.
So historically, and if you look at just the return, for example, an indoor grows probably somewhere between seventeen hundred and two thousand dollars a pound. A mixed light or probably ranges somewhere between six hundred and twelve hundred dollars a pound. And an outdoor grower roughly is three hundred and fifty to seven hundred dollars a pound. So what they can sell their product on the market is different than at different types of activities that they conduct.
Okay, one other question. Can you, what's a what's a description difference between distribution and retail? What is actual distribution?
So again, a distribution is someone that takes the product from one licensed activity to another. So if I'm a cultivator or a manufacturer, that you can't take your product straight to the retailer yourself, you have to use a distributor. So the distributor will go pick up that product, bring it to their location, make sure it's tested. And currently, they also collect the state excise tax, and then they're the only one that's permitted to move it to the retailer. You cannot take it directly to you. It's kind of like the, you know, alcohol industry, you can't take alcohol straight to the retailer as a as a distill distiller. You have to have a distribution company get to the retail.
So how do we so how do we track distribution?
So distribution is tracked through track and trace and metrics. So both of those will be used to calculate how they're going to, and it's on gross receipts. So whatever sales they make, it will be based on that.
Okay, I I understand that part, but how how do we track what those gross receipts are in distribution? Obviously, in retail, they have a retail outlet. Are there distribution outlets that we track or or how how is that tracked?
So the distribution, so the the distributor themselves has to use metric, and it shows all the tax. It shows all the transactions that are occurring of how they're moving the product from one location to another. And actually, what the sales are, they have a manifest that tells you what that is. And so then it would be run reports on that to determine what their their gross overall gross revenue is.
So so does a distribution have a brick and mortar place in town necessarily?
Yes, it has to have a distribution. If if it's an activity that actually someone's considering being in Marysville, yes, they have to have a distribution, I mean, a distribution distribution location has a fixed location where they hold the product in 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 their facility. Typically, they don't keep it for more than seventy-two hours because they're just trying to transport it from one location to the other. They have to wait until the testing is done and authorized that it is a product that can be sold to market before they move it. That's the reason why they hold it, I've been baiting it until that process is completed.
Okay, got it. Thank you, I understand that now. That's it, Ricky.
Thank you. Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. Question on rate of taxes, this flexibility to adjust the increase and decrease of tax, is that going to eliminate a Prop two eighteen requirement? Is that going to be part of the ballot?
Yes, it's the way it's written is it's it it will give you a little flexibility to change the rate without changing the will of the voters. As long as, as it states in the in the ordinance itself, you can make any modifications as long as you do not increase the tax. You do not have the authority to increase the tax. The vote will be on with the voters authorize you to do.
So that would be the protection for the voter, the Prop two eighteen, increase of tax that have to go back to the voters. Any adjustment from there down would not have to go as a two eighteen voting. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So will that be included in the ballot measure?
It's actually in the ordinance itself, which is going to be an adoption of that and that document. So if the voters approve that, the section in there stipulates that. That's the modification or appeal, and it clearly defines what you can and cannot do in it.
Good, thank you.
I I guess I want to clear something up, Councilmember Simmons. If if the max is, let's say, ten percent, and I I don't think that's one of the rates, but let's say the rate is six percent, the max for grocery receipts for retail. And we're currently at five percent. We we can go lower, right? We can go to four point five if we wanted to as a body, as a policy. But we could also go to from our current five percent to six percent without, once the voters, if the voters approve this measure, then we would have the ability to go up to six. What we don't have the ability to do is go above six, correct, David?
That's correct, that's correct. And and see, that's part of the the concern of the industry. Now, yours says it can go up to fifteen percent. So they're looking at their worst scenario risk factor because it has an impact on their business models. And again, the rates have come down significantly. We have more cities that are reducing the rates in today's environment. Some are more on the wholesale because they're basically competing to just create jobs because they anticipated ten times more than business option, business activity that they have. Right now, their goal is just to create jobs, not necessarily to create a tax. Your goal, you you're small enough in the numbers that you're trying to balance both.
Yeah, well, Simmons, go ahead.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, just to follow up. Say we wanted to go above the cap that is rec that is now, we'd have to go back to two eighteen ballot to get the public to approve that? Or is that a state requirement, you can't go above that?
You just go back to the voters, you go back to the voters.
So we can raise it above the cap? Okay, thank you.
Councilmember McKenzie?
Um, yes, I was whoops, wondering for currently our retail tax rate is five percent. And then for manufacturing, testing and distribution, do we, we don't have those set yet, right? These so these numbers would be new tax rates on the activities?
Yeah, so it have the three license type activities that's taxable, but also ability to tax illegal activity or out of town businesses that come into town. Anything of that nature or any new technology or anything that will change that we can't even anticipate at this time.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Hudson? So I I guess I want to clarify something. What the voters are asked, being asked to do or will will be asked if this moves forward is specifically on the taxation portion. The other part of the the changes in our ordinance is they don't necessarily have to go to the voters, right? I mean, we can make adjustments ourselves. It's just the the part part the voter approval is the actual taxation. But all the other changes that are kind of on this ordinance that are being proposed, we can do that on our own without the voter approval, correct?
So if you change definitions or interpretations, then it's assumed that if it's absence of being in there, that you do not have the ability to tax it. So part of the goal of here is to at least be mindful of anything strategically and put it in there so that if it's absent or silent, after a sign that no one can argue that it's not a it's not a taxable activity or that it is.
And and so so kind of our our not knowing Prop sixty-four, and that was going to pass, and the new regulations coming afterward. You know, our initial Prop AF didn't take in consideration those that kind of the new changes that came afterwards. How do we do that again? How do we make it broad enough so so we can just kind of say any cannabis related product would be taxed? Or so so we we can we can kind of make it a bit broader instead of having to come back each time there's changes at the legislature or at the voter.
And that's what this ordinance does. Initially, Measure F was intent and goal was only focus on retail and cultivation. And we know understanding now that regulations are in place and sixty-four is in place. And then the industry has evolved more, we have a better understanding of of its business model. The you know, the loopholes or gaps that were done either regulatory or through taxes. And this ordinance is trying to address all of, and that's the reason on the hemp component as well, why we.
I guess just one more question, and this might be to our city attorney or city manager.
Every morning, every morning, I sexually assault the Starfish.
Really?
I sexually assault the Starfish. Nigger, nigger.
We've been, we've been zoomed. Huh, so someone so that's called zoomed. That's like we've been bombed or whatever. That's always interesting. Sorry about that, folks. We believe we know the culprit, so I'm going to try to get rid of them or her, whoever may be. I think we got rid of him. Sorry about that, folks. That's technology for you. So my apologies. Here we go. Dave, David, a question or maybe for our city manager on the resolution. The section four ballot question, that language is very specific. It doesn't delineate the different rates that you presented, David. It just says not to exceed ten dollars or six percent gross receipts or whatever. But there were some variations in some of the things that you presented. Do we have to expand on the language on the ballot question? Or is this will be fine? Hold on, David, hold on, let me unmute you. Go ahead, David.
Yeah, so that's sufficient. The ballot measure only allows you seventy-five words. So you have to say as much as you can in a limited amount of time. The attachment is the critical adoption of that. So I adopted over seventy-five tax measures, and it's always referenced to the attachment where the ordinance and link to the resolution. So when the voters approve that, that's the word, that's the most detailed, what they need to know, things you can't change. And everything to that is the is the details.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Any further questions from council members? Otherwise, I'll open up the public hearing. Seeing none. If I can find my agenda. The first recommendation for staff is to open up for public public hearing and receive any public comments. I know we received one from Perfect Union. All of you should have gotten that letter from Perfect Union. In any case, I don't, I don't know how we make that public, Nicole, but we did receive a letter from Perfect Union. And somehow, if you can make that public for folks, so they can see that. Aside from that, is there any members from the community or public that like to make a comment during this public hearing? Anyone from the public like to make a public hearing? Please raise your hand or use the hand raised portion or send me a text, I mean, a chat. Okay, seeing no hands raised on the Zoom. I'm going to assume that there's no public comments. Nicole, any 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 the any public comments from your side? Nicole? Nicole, we can't hear you.
None at this time, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll close the public hearing. So any other comments? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion for both the two recommendations, two and three. I think any any other comments from our discussion from council members? Okay, Mr. Simmons, Councilmember Simmons?
You, Mayor. This discussion, are we discussing the letter from the union, union?
You 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 could, you could definitely.
I just have one comment to make, if I might, just for a couple of minutes, seconds here.
Absolutely.
I did some research on a Marysville tax base, and it's really interesting to note that there's eight point two five. People have a perception that's what the city gets from the taxes that goes into our coffers. And that's the furthest thing from the truth. And I'll quote this for your consideration and and listen to what I'm saying. California State Sales Tax, they get point two five percent of that. The Yuba County Sales Tax gets one percent of that. Marysville Tax ends one percent and a special tax is one percent. So we get about two percent of that eight point five percent. So to say that the union, I think they recommended three point five percent across the board by averaging out all the activities that just contributes to the sales tax. And they come up to three point five percent they're recommending. I don't know why we would even consider that since we only get two percent now, the sales tax into our coffers. Just an observation, if anybody'd like to comment on that, or if I read it wrong, I'd like to be corrected.
It's two separate, two separate taxes, Bill. One is the sales tax that all retail items pay. And to the Marysville, as you know, we have the additional one percent that we passed through Measure C.
Yes.
And so all anything that's retail in the city pays pays that. This additional excess tax is specifically for cannabis products. So in 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 the sense, they are playing not only the sales tax or the 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 consumers are playing not only the 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 sales tax measure, the sales tax, but they're also playing this additional excess tax of five percent right now. So the city of Marysville not only gets the, as you mentioned, about two percent for the sales tax, but we also get an additional five percent specifically for Measure F. So we get about seven percent in total gross receipts.
Yeah, and thank you for explaining that. I I knew that, but it's good to bring that up so people understand it, that the fact is that five percent is for the cannabis industry, not because of the citizens. It's not a retail sales, it's for them to do business. And we discussed it based upon square footage, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I just wanted to bring that up, that the Marysville City does not get eight point five percent of the sales tax of any products sold in Marysville. It's very minimal is what we get. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. David, do you want to speak to that or? I was trying to clarify, but I'll give it to the expert to kind of explain.
Sure, you know, and again, as a citizen, and the way the tax rate is that that is a tax for the privilege of that business doing to conduct business in the city. It is not a tax on the consumer. The the business may absorb that tax or, you know, adjust a rate to do that, but they got to compete with other businesses. But the profit margin is again, why we recommend that is on that cumulative charge. The goal is to keep it under thirty percent. Profit margin is again, why we recommend that is on that cumulative charge. The goal is to keep it under thirty percent. With the rates we have provided, you will make those businesses very competitive and consistent. So the prevailing rates on separate categories. You know, a, a testing lab can't pay that kind of rate. There's a reason why we have their rates lower. And as I mentioned, there's ten times as many cultivators. So if you're trying to encourage any cultivator to come into town. You have to have a rate that each type of activity can compete with their competitors to take their product to market or to sustain their business. And that's what we have developed for you.
Okay. Uh, Vice Mayor? Hold on, you're not, you're not muted. Okay, go ahead.
Did, uh, I, I'm assuming we're gonna have it at a different time uh. The conversation on this letter. Because the only thing I wanted to point out was even in their own letter, they said four percent was the norm, yet they asked for three point five. But I'm guessing this is gonna be a separate uh discussion other than right now.
Well, I think, I think they, you know. I think bottom line, they can negotiate now what that rate may be. I mean, but as a policy, I don't see that. Our policy could be, both things could be true. We, you know, this, our current ordinance is would allow them to have a lower rate uh via our, you know, you know, if we were to make that as a policy. This new.
Well, that, that's my point, though. We're, we're working here strictly on the policy which. Which will give us, you know, obviously, I guess up to the five percent, but this discussion of their letter and what we're gonna do individually with them should really be at another time, correct?
Sure, I think they're trying to make a point that um, you know, to be competitive, uh, you know, we would love to have it lower uh and don't put us in a position, but I don't think this. I don't, I don't, I think in my mind, uh, both things are true. We can pass this, this thing is actually advantageous for now, sorry, not only for um Perfect Union. Uh, but in the sense, we're actually low lowering that, that max because right now we can go way higher, I think up to twenty-five percent. So actually, by lowering it to about six percent max in retail, we're actually um, they're in a better position as a business model. They can say, okay, they, the, 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 the worst case scenario is six percent and they're gonna have to figure out those numbers. But I think uh depending on the council, you know, I think there's, you know, the policy, the policy of what that tax rate is. Uh, we'll come back to the council if that's a separate discussion that we wanna have. But yeah, I think both things are true in that sense.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes, just follow up. Uh, the three point five percent, I tried to figure out, I tried to figure, figure out how they came up with that number. And what I did is I took the four areas that they were talking about and they want to merge those in. Merge them as one. And I think they took the mathematically, they took the two point five, whatever they were. And divided by four, that came up to three point five. So it's an average. They're asking for all the charges that we're charging for. They averaged those out for three point five. It's mathematically, that looks like what they did. So that's not really a true value. Wait, you're pointing your finger at me, Bruce?
No.
As long as it's, as long as it's that finger.
I'm raising my hand to follow up on that.
No, I, I hear you. But anyway, that's kind of where I came up with, because you've averaged those out and you come up with three point five percent. So whatever that. That's not a real true evaluation. And then they're using places like uh Costa, Costa Mesa, Oakland, Long Beach. The populations of those places are just astronomical compared to our little twelve point five one percent uh population. It, it just doesn't make sense. We have two dispensaries and they're talking about people expanding them in these big cities. Oakland, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand people. Uh, Long Beach, hundred and sixty-seven thousand, uh, excuse me, four hundred and sixty-seven thousand people. Their market is outrageous compared to our little. Uh, I think it was something like um a hundred and seventy-five thousand people in the. The, the uh city counties of Yuba and Sutter, plus integrated uh incorporated cities. So I think there, there's viewing that a little bit and I, their argument really is not a sound argument for a tax reduction. To me, I think that has to have more scrutiny, but. That's my, that's my story and I'm gonna stick to it.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor.
Um, so this is probably a question for David. Uh, it sounds. With their proposal, we would really be um. That would really be out of line for exactly what you're proposing to us, that certain parts of the industry can't pay as much as other. Areas of the industry. So for us to even think about negotiating with them, something that would be across the board wouldn't even make sense, would it?
That, that's correct. As far as looking at it from each activity, uh, especially since you do have an active testing lab in town or one proposed to come in. That you would actually be increasing their tax rate on this proposal. There, they have the lowest margins of profitability because of what they charge for activity. They're not a, a cannabis touching. Operation. There again, just the testing function of that. I also want to share Councilman Simmons mentioned about Costa Mesa and Long Beach in the report. I didn't get to touch on it, but. Costa Mesa, which is a client of ours, and I evaluated this is, they had, they had thirty businesses that have been trying to get up and running. For almost three years. And this was a citizen initiative. Did that six percent. So the very people that put the tax rate of six percent on, the very people that were complaining that it was too high. But they could not get the business up and running. And so in order them to be um competitive in Orange County, Long Beach, LA region, they had to bring their rate down. Nothing other than to create jobs. And the same with Long Beach, who has two hundred and fifty. Applications on the books, but only had thirty-five businesses that got up in the last four years. And they got depleted inventory property where they're just trying to create jobs. Or a city in certain areas or sections of a, of a city that's four hundred and fifty thousand people.
Well, that, with that statement, David, I mean. We don't have that situation because we're only at this point allowing to. So without taking advantage of the dispensaries, we kind of have somewhat of a captive market, correct?
True.
Okay.
Uh, Councilmember Simmons?
Follow up. Also, the tax rate, the tax, sales tax rate for um Costa Mesa, seven point five percent. Oakland, nine point two five percent. Long Beach, ten point two five percent. So if you do all these cities and look into cannabis producing counties and cities. They're all pretty much the same and we fall right in line with our eight point five percent, right in line to the median. So, and that's the sales tax. That's not talking about the taxes for producing in, in the City of Marysville. So we're right, right, right in there. And I don't think, now is not the time to, in my opinion, uh, to be adjusting anything. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, and I. What we're working on right now is creating this framework um for, for this industry to come in and um. And uh do business in our city. And, and I don't think we'll be unfair and we haven't been unfair. I think the two organizations we're working with, I think they feel like we're partners and. And we work well together and, and they've been invested, you know, they invested in the brick and mortar in one area and. Um, and I know they took a lot of uh, you know, actual, you know, dollar investment. They, they've created jobs. Uh, good paying jobs and stuff. So we want them to feel like Marysville's a place where they can work with. Um, and so I, I think in my mind, this is just a framework that if another uh company or the same company wants to come in and, and, and start some other. Um, portion of this industry, whether it's uh manufacturing or they want to get into growth. The framework will be there in place. And then I think, you know, there's needs for negotiation and, and, or a new policy when it comes to the actual amount or rates. Um, I think, I, I think this framework will allow us to have some wiggle room to negotiate with those parties.
Well, the only thing I think is the fact that we can negotiate and we can bring these down. And we're absolutely controlled from going up. It seems like maybe the caps are just a little bit low. Well, I mean, it, once, once we set those caps and once we, you know, go out and to the public have this approved. Uh, where, what is it? What's the cap on that? Six percent, I think, or five percent on the retail? And not that we, again, not that we wouldn't negotiate with them or anyone, but. Without knowing what's gonna happen down the road or who's gonna be in this position, um, it, it just seems like maybe the caps are a little bit on the low side.
Uh, let me, I, I'm not gonna respond to that. Um, but I, that's a good point. Uh, Ms. McKenzie?
I was wondering the same thing and I was wondering um. Because we're so close to that right now and I wouldn't suggest going lower than we are right now. I think it's working well and I, I like the uh. Capturing the additional tax on the other activities. Uh, but David, can you tell us why, what is the reasoning between of the no higher than thirty percent with all the uses?
Sure, there's two parts. Remember, um, in twenty sixteen, part of the goal of regulating the industry is that we would move it from an illegal world to a legal world. And so for cities and counties that did two things, one banned retail with only having six hundred and forty-two in the state. And with putting certain tax rates, it is encourage people to come into the light because of the fact that they cannot be profitable. Or that they can continue um being successful in the illegal world. The second part is, is as a consumer, you get to a price point of what is conscious to them is what's going to drive them to actually want to buy in a legal environment. The goal is two-fold. One is if you're trying to encourage other types of business acti- activities to come into the city when they have other options. Economic development, you're trying to make it uh um a business model for them. They, they look at three things, price of employment. Prices of, of property to lease and price intact. If they pick those three in their business models and pencil it out. And they either pencil it out that they're coming to you or not. And so they look at the worst scenario. And so that's part of it. And then the consumer, again, it's, do I buy legal or do I buy illegal? Or do I buy from a delivery and have it delivered in the Marysville? Or do I buy it because it's somewhere in that same price point that I can tolerate the, the price point? And that's why we created those rates and they've been very successful.
Has there been any evidence that uh having? Marijuana legalized has decreased the illicit market at all? Because I haven't, the latest article I saw said that in California, it hadn't. It was still a thriving illicit market, even though we've got legalized marijuana everywhere. So do you have any?
And that is correct. Where there's limited areas is that um. Five years ago, we had twenty-five hundred to twenty-eight hundred co-op and collectives as retailers. Today, we have six hundred and forty-two. We've reduced the number of retailers by seventy-five percent and we've increased the consumer by eight percent. So more users, less places to get it. That the math tells itself of why we have more illegal people still being successful until we provide those opportunities in the legal world.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just, something you brought up there, um. You mentioned delivery, where we had discussed previously about how that would be taxed or licensed, or it was business license or whatever. Is any of this gonna affect what we do or how we proceed uh with dealing with delivery services?
Yes, then the, this ordinance clearly defines delivery from out of town as a tax of activity, not they. And it also requires them to actually register for a business tax fee. So then you can monitor to make sure that they are. One, registered and track them. And if they are actually paying their taxes for the delivery services.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um. No other questions or any comments?
I just like to comment again before we move forward that um, I, I just think we need to really be careful on having the cap too low.
Yeah, I, I, I guess I, I have this uh. Feeling that things are gonna change pretty rapidly and I think it's more um. More retail uh, um, you know, places are start opening up throughout the state. Uh, there, I think there's definitely could be more competition. Bottom line is when we open up our retail space. Um, the world didn't end like some people thinking that the world was gonna end somehow. There's gonna be illicit uh marijuana everywhere and kids were gonna get stoned everywhere because of it. So that didn't happen. And I think, I think other communities can start seeing the example that. Um, it's, it's good to minimize the black market and at the same time be competitive. So you can have these businesses open up in your communities. And be able to uh generate uh public revenue so that you can use them for uh general um services like police, fire. And, and public works and parks. So I think that's the balance that we don't want to push people away.
No, but we still have the ability to negotiate that. We still have the ability to set the standard or set the amounts we can. But if the market does change and we ever want it to go up, we're unable to do that. Now, will that ever happen? Maybe not. Maybe not. But as long as we have the ability to come down. Uh, we can make it fair. And I understand the basis of doing this of keeping it out of the illegal market, keeping it in the legal license market. Which I think is fantastic. And I do see that advantage. I just, just wanna be careful that we don't set it too low. In case the market ever does change it, and then we would have to go back to the community again.
What, what, what would you, what would you um? What would you um consider? What would you suggest?
Um, I don't think it would hurt if we just put one percent on top of everything. And then again, we, we can set those anywhere we want. And that's, David, am I right? That's just the maximum. We can still set it at any place we'd like.
Sure, uh, you could. That's, that's your prerogative too. But again, remember, the goal is to look at the worst scenario, drive the businesses to. The, the wholesale businesses to come into town. At the same time, make sure that that business is gonna, your retailer is gonna stay invested in improving. Providing better paying jobs, be able to pay the regulatory fees, right benefit, community benefits to the city. Remember, grocery receipts itself will increase the revenues that are driven in. And so the better that business can market and brand themselves and create more, more volume to their store, it's gonna create more gross receipts. They're gonna eat by not having to compete with Sacramento deliveries coming into town and drive those deliveries now. And so that is critical that we believe that four to six, that price point we're giving you will increase growth, revenues because of the investment both by the business and the consumer. Eliminate some of your competition that's coming in and impacting your market.
Except for that, uh. And, and I absolutely believe you, David. I absolutely agree with you, but it doesn't allow for if the market changes in, in the opposite way down the road. Um, but I, I totally agree with your assessment of what you're saying.
Um, okay, is there, okay, let, let's hear from McKenzie first and then Simmons.
Well, I would um like to say that I'm not personally interested in seeing an expansion of the marijuana market. And um, we actually have seen an increase in youth marijuana use since one recreational. I was talking to Marysville Joint Unified um Truancy Officer. And she said there has been an increase in infractions for controlled substances, which were mainly uh marijuana. And that there are lots of kids, um, they're getting it from their parents because they're shopping. At the dispensary, they're getting it for friends who are able to shop at dispensary. So it's become much more available to the youth in our community because of having gone recreational. So I'm not personally interested in making. This a more place to expand. Use. I, I don't think that in any community, more people using marijuana is really good for the strength of the community, the health of students. And so for me, um, you know, I'm looking at this and thinking, I want to be fair to the people who are here working, but I don't want to. I want to be fair to the people who are here working, but I don't want to be a place where, you know, I, I'm not, I know, and you know, I've never been in favor of having this anyway because of the negative outcomes that have been seen in every community that has, uh, marijuana legalized, but, um, I wanna be fair, and I do wanna capture the, um, activities that we have going right now that are not covered in the tax ordinance. So, um, to me, increasing I think that's not a bad, you're so close to the cap right now, and I don't think anybody's having a problem. So that would give some flexibility in the future, wouldn't have to take it back to the voters again if we decided to wanna take it up again. Um, and I, I would suggest, I think that matter, but that, um, we would dedicate a portion of, uh, tax revenues from, um, marijuana sales to youth programming to add to the top sixty-four grant that Yuba County Office of Education is working on. Um, but so my, I mean, if I, I am really thinking, I, I could possibly support it because it is, you know, giving us some guidelines and fair, but not to, um, encourage more cannabis businesses. That isn't my, my desire at all, because I do see the negative, um, impact it's having on our kids. Those are my comments for now, but I would be in favor of adding another point to those along with Bruce.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Simmons.
Yes, you know, if you're looking at, uh, as, from a business point of view, a hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine people, that's the market that we have in the Yuba Sutter ca- area. And you have two dispensaries, mark, uh, supporting that market. I'm definitely not in favor of bringing more people in here, new, new businesses coming in, it's gonna sell these products. I think that with our population and taking it to the Northern California, uh, there, there's probably all they can handle with the two dispensaries. And if I was a dispensary owner, I sure wouldn't wanna expand that and bring new people in, unless it's a new business and doesn't compete with mine. And I think that market share is one that's holding those people, holding those businesses together. And I definitely, definitely do not want to use our marketing strategy as a deterrent for black marketing. That's not what we're doing here. We're generating revenue on a product that's being sold in our community to benefit the safety and, and quality of life of our citizens. And I don't think that we take on by putting more markets in here that's gonna help reduce the black market, which is gonna reduce the ability of the mi- markets we have to be successful, because competition is wonderful, but there's not that many people to support that. And I do, Bruce, I think we ought to go up maybe half to a one percent increase in the cap, and, uh, and kind of put this expansion thing on the black back burner, because I, I'm with Stephanie McKenzie, my colleague on my left, as I look forward, that we don't need to expand. We worked hard to get those two dispensaries and the process we have now. And we indirectly, uh, promised the citizens that we would not expand, we would stick status quo. We didn't ever come out and said that, but that was one of our arguments. So I'm definitely not in favor of any expansion in my lifetime, which is not too long, I guess, but, uh, that's how I feel about it.
Another, another fifty years, Mr. Simmons.
Well, I, I wish that was true, but you know, when you push eighty-three, fifty years is a long time off, man.
My grandma's a hundred and five, man, you can do this.
Yeah, but that's the bloodline, brother. Anyway, that's kind of how I feel. My philosophy is, you know, and I've been an avid supporter of, of marketing, and the fact that was one of my issues was this is not a moral issue for me, it's a business issue. It's an issue of generating revenue, and I don't think expanding that's gonna do that. It's gonna take from that market share, so. That's my business philosophy.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your input. Uh, I'm gonna have, uh, I'm mute Hudson. Uh, go ahead, Councilmember Hudson.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, so in favor of time, are we just talking about possibly passing the motion here as it reads as number two and number three? I mean, I get it, I'm not big on tax more businesses. I don't wanna expand. I mean, that's a great conversation we can have for another time. But right now, I mean, we're looking to move forward. I'm not in favor of adding one percent myself. I mean, it's a, it's, it's a, we're right in the fair mean, middle of everything, what, what David was telling us. So it might end up working for the better if we just move forward and go from there, or are we looking to change this and bring it back to the table in no time? I say, are we at the spot where we make a motion, or where are we at? We still in discussion? Because if we are, I'd like to make a motion, unless Marty's got something to jump in there.
Uh, Marty, do you have something?
Just quickly, I just wanted to clarify process here. If we're moving forward with, um, the recommendations that are before you this evening, then it would be simply passing a motion, and it would then move towards our whole internal process of putting it on the ballot, and then the ordinance would come back to the council after the vote in November for review and approval. Um, if there's substantial changes, for example, Vice Mayor Batakevoli's recommendation to potentially add a one cent, sorry, one percent to each of the different categories, then that would be a substantial change, and we would have to bring that back for another public hearing and approval again. So just a procedural difference here in, in approach.
Thank you, Marty. So with that, I'd like to just move forward as it states right now, and make a motion to pass, uh, this, uh, study session with, uh, number two and number three, as it's written.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a second by Simmons. I see his, uh, hands raised. Uh, the motion is to accept the recommendation from staff, uh, for, um, item two, pass a motion waiving the first reading and introduction of an ordinance amending the current border approved measure F tax. And, uh, item three there to pass the motion waiving, uh, the first reading and introducing ordinance to amend title five. Um, and, um, in, uh, of Marysville municipal code entitled Business License Regulation, amend chapter five point one-two entitled Marijuana Business Tax. So that's the motion to take both of those, um, both of those actions together. Is that right, Mr. Hudson?
That's correct.
Uh, Mr. Simmons is, uh, okay?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay, motion and second, uh, any further discussion? CNN roll call, please.
Councilmember Hudson? Councilmember Ma- Oh, I apologize. Councilmember McKenzie? Councilmember Simmons?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Batakevoli?
No.
And Mayor Samiowa?
Votes yes. Uh, uh, the vote passes with the vote of three and two noes. So three yes and two oaths, so the vote, vote passes with the majority. Thank you. Let's see. Let's move to item five. Uh, approve the SB one road maintenance and rehab project list for fiscal year twenty. Thank you so much, David. I'm sorry. I appreciate your presentation and the time you took to work with our staff.
Welcome, Mayor. Good evening.
Thank, good night. Uh, recommendation is to adopt resolution, uh, to approve the road maintenance and rehab proposed project list for fiscal year twenty twenty-one and submit it to, um, CTC. Uh, this comes from our Public Works Director, Mr. Craig Platt. Sir?
Uh, Mayor and Council, uh, this is a house clean. I am required by the state. So the city is required to submit an approved resolution with the proposed project list to the CTC in, uh, May of twenty twenty, in order to receive the RMR funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Uh, once submitted, the city would continue to receive monthly, um, apportionments. Um, and using the city's two thousand and eighteen pavement management program findings, the city council, uh, directed staff at that time to prioritize, uh, maintenance projects uh, for streets to be in better condition over reconstruction of failing streets using preventative measures such as the micro grind overlay, rubberized, reseals, and crack sealing. As a result, staff recommends the following, uh, planned street maintenance for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, uh, should funds be available. And what we've added is the redefined, uh, H Street. And First Street between, uh, uh, B and E. And, and you'll see in the resolution, um, what we've done is split that between these projects that were submitted in the last cycle and updated the list to, uh, to the current projects. Um, this does not actually define us to actually have to do these projects. This is a formality, um, to show the state that we are continually spending our amount, our funds, um, for, uh, road maintenance. You can't use it for, um, general maintenance, like um, potholing and those types of things. It actually has to be, uh, used for road improvements that'll give you a sustainable life. Um, I've read them as far as the, the cost and the figures. As far as the money that will be available in this year, um, was roughly about two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars that we would receive, and currently, um, the state has not revised any of those numbers, which I would imagine possibly that some of those will go down um, in the, in the coming months. Um, but as far as the revision of the state, what they proposed for next year, that has not changed currently. So what I'm asking for you to do is approve resolution, um, for road maintenance rehabilitation, RMR funds, um, with approved list for the twenty twenty-one to be submitted to the state.
We lost Rick.
Yeah. Take over, Bruce.
Yeah.
I'm back, I'm back, sorry, sorry. I'm here, I was here the whole time, and, you know.
Boy, you didn't want me to take over?
You can take over, Bruce, go ahead. Now, I have to give up.
I just, I just got a, a question. I totally understand this. I see it somewhat of a formality, and I understand that. Uh, my question, though, is of the nine hundred thousand that we approved, that was for that nineteen twenty, um, uh, budget, where do we stand with that? It, the only repair that I think we saw was Seventeenth Street. So, um, where do we stand with that money? Which is, I guess, a separate issue than what you're actually asking for here, Craig.
Yeah, it is. I actually resubmitted the same projects as the alternate in, in that, and be in the resolution. Out of that nine hundred thousand, um, roughly, we spent just over two hundred thousand. Um, a lot of that was general fund money, and the other parts of that was two years of, um, I don't wanna, it's maintenance of effort. And so that was accumulated into, uh, um, the nine hundred and something thousand dollars, which was some savings from a couple prior city uh, projects, and I don't remember what that was, um, off the top of my head.
Wasn't it the bonds? Some of that was.
First was bond, and then I don't know what the other piece was. It was something else, savings. It might have been from the insurance or something that was pushed to local streets. And I think under the current conditions of what we may be facing over the next couple of months, that we need to look at that and reevaluate uh, those funds. So right now, the general fund money has not been spent. Um, currently, what we have spent is RMR funds and SB one funds, and it's roughly about two hundred and three thousand dollars.
The SB-
That is there.
The SB one funds didn't have a match?
Um, there are no matches. There, there's a maintenance of effort, which was, um, drawn from around two thousand and twelve is where that was established. Um, I think it's rather high, because it's roughly two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, which I have a hard time. And Jennifer and I are actually gonna start looking at Auden Hill's books, but that's back from two thousand and twelve is where that was derived from. And looking at the financial situation back then, I find it really hard that the city was spending, um, over half, or a quarter of a million dollars on streets at the time in two thousand and twelve. So currently.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, CNN, CNN, no further questions, any comments from, uh, from the public? I think we're on Facebook. Nicole, any comments? Come in on email or text or?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Okay, CNN, um, and, uh, this, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt resolution to improve the road maintenance and rehabilitation proposed projects list, uh, for fiscal year twenty twenty-one to be submitted to the California Transportation Committee as presented by our Public Works Director.
We're all there.
We're all there. Uh, Simmons, did you have a question or was that a motion?
No, that was a motion.
So I think, Stephanie, I think he beat you with a finger. So, motion by Simmons, second by McKenzie. Roll call, please.
Somebody raise your hand if you say yes.
I think officially we have to take a roll call. Nicole, are you there?
Yes, Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Councilmember McKenzie?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Batakevoli?
Yes.
Mayor Samiowa?
Yes, uh, votes approved with the vote of five zero. Uh, thank you, Craig, appreciate it.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Let's go, uh, to item six, memorandum of understanding establishing the Bay County Homeless Engagement and Resolution Team, also known as HEART. Uh, the recommendation from staff is to approve resolution to enter into MOU between Yuba and Sutter Counties, the City of Yuba City, City of La Voce, and City of Wheatland, establishing the Bay County Homeless Engagement and Resolution Team. Um, this regional team will be able to provide cross-jurisdictional, comprehensive, and coordinated mobile homeless services, including the ability to share with each other confidential and personal, uh, information regarding those individuals experiencing homelessness. Uh, this recommendation comes from our, uh, Chief of Police, Mr. Sachs, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Honorable Councilmembers, um, yeah, just as you stated, that is our recommendation. Right now, we currently have an informal team in, on the Yuba County side of the river, um, with Marysville PD, Yuba County, um, Health and Human Services, and Adventist Writeout. Um, we currently go down and, uh, do, uh, engagement and response on the Yuba County side. However, um, to be more cooperative with the other agencies, um, the other agencies such as Public Health uh, will not share confidential information with the rest of us. And so in order for us to be able to share that confidential information, um, across the board, uh, amongst all agencies from law enforcement to Health and Human Services and the care workers, um, this MOU will actually encompass all that together, um, once approved, and everybody will have a confidentiality agreement, so that way we can track resources, track individuals, and, um, have an engagement and a response, um, to our homeless, um, that are not only in the river bottoms, but that are living within the community as well. So, um, it's definitely a benefit for, um, us to be a part of that team with them, um, as the police department's concerned, um, or any other, of the law enforcement. Um, our portion of it, as it's lined out in the MOU, is just the safety and security, uh, for, uh, the responding teams that go down there for the outreach. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have on this.
Are any questions for the chief? CNN, any comments from the public on this matter?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, thank you for this work, uh, Chief Sachs. I know this is, um, uh, you put a lot of personal effort and time. Um, uh, we really do, the community really owes you, um, a lot for, for all the work you're putting into, into this, and, and, and the, the organized way that the community has come together from both sides of the river. It's really impressive uh, throughout the state, if not the nation, and the way we've come together and tried to support, uh, some of our homeless, uh, populations, but also support, um, uh, the needs of our neighbors and, um, and our homo, and our business owners. So I think all the efforts have really, uh, been fruitful, and this is just another, uh, just another level of the great work you guys are doing. So thank you so much, Chief. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the resolution to enter into this M O U. Motion by Ms. McKenzie, is there a second? Second by Vice Mayor Bette Cavoli. All those in favor say aye. A roll call please.
Councilmember Hudson?
Aye.
Councilmember McKenzie?
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bette Cavoli?
Aye.
Mayor Sam Iola?
I votes approved with the vote of five zero. Again, thank you chief.
Thanks Chris.
Thank you.
Let's move to committee reports. I have a list here by name, so I'll call out any reports for, from Councilmember McKenzie.
No.
How about from Councilmember Hudson?
No.
Councilmember Simmons?
Nada, no.
Okay. I guess I want to ask either Councilor Simmons or Vice Mayor. But vertical boy, is there any baseball committee updates?
We have a, I believe. You might want to ask Marty, but I believe she's putting together a meeting. That we could get together with the main owners. And sit down and discuss what. They're going to want to do with a, or if they can even do something to shorten season. But again, I maybe, might be better if Marty gives you a little fill in on what's going on there.
Miss City Manager.
Yes, I have been in contact with my primary contact in the Gold Sox, Tom Leninger, and we are in the midst of scheduling. A meeting with the ad hoc committee and the principals of the Gold Sox LLC. So. Hopefully by the next council meeting, we'll have some sort of an update for the council.
Thank you mayor. Okay, any other committee reports, Vice Mayor?
No.
I have any, for me, you know, I've had, I met, this is kind of my third or fourth or fifth. Public meeting that I've used Zoom. I've never actually led one, but. We've had meetings with the air quality board and I know they're coming out with proposals and our grant opportunities for cities and. And other governmental entities and I believe that. We submitted a list of possible proposals to, to go after. So I don't know. And the city manager, can you kind of expand on, on some of those proposals that, or that list of proposals that you sent out?
I'm sorry mayor, which, which proposals?
Feather River Air Quality Board, they were, they were looking for a list of possible proposals. I serve on the air quality board. I know we were looking for cities to, to send out proposals or, or, or list possible proposals.
Correct, we, we, the. Air Quality Board wanted us to generate a list of potential projects. From all departments across the city and to be able to use that as examples to give to the state in order for. The air quality board to be able to get their full allocation of funding and then at a later time. We would consider and submit for grant applications. So we did generate that list in, to meet their deadline, which was I believe last Friday. And we submitted that to the air quality board in time for their submission to the state.
Thank you for that work. Thank you.
Marty, before you leave. Mr. Mayor. I'm assuming that everything has just been put on hold with the Yuba Water Agency and Ellis Lake.
Yes, I haven't heard, I mean, everybody, my understanding is pretty much everyone except essential staff at the Yuba Water Agency is working remotely and so. And there has been no invites or scheduling of appointments or meetings for the Ellis Lake Ad Hoc Committee and resuming that I, I. Haven't been in direct contact specifically on this topic with the water agency, but. It's been silent. So I'm assuming that they're waiting for the order to lift so that we can return to regular face-to-face meetings. But I can follow up with them and see if we want to move forward with a Zoom meeting of the ad hoc committee if you would prefer.
Okay, thank you.
Would you prefer that Bruce? I would, I would like that.
Yeah, you know, yeah, I think it would be great Marty, if you could at least find out what their intention is at this point, if it's to try to move forward. With a Zoom meeting or if it's. I guess, I guess more than anything to get a feel where they're at also.
Absolutely, I will do that and get back to the council.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
I don't have any other committee reports. Any council correspondents, Nicole?
None at this time, excuse me, none at this time mayor.
Thank you. Any city manager report, Ms. Brown?
Just briefly, I just wanted to let the council know that even though city hall is closed at this time to the public. We are all here working and serving the citizens of Marysville and. I think some of us feel like we, we've taken on a second job with COVID-19. Myself, the police chief, the fire chief and the city clerk probably and particularly are spending. Large portions of our day keeping track and following all the COVID-19 information so that we can. Get out the appropriate information to the council, members of the public and working collaboratively with the Bay County. Teams and public health officer and compliance task force. So. We are very diligently working on those items, but also continue to work on city projects as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Council comments, Councilmember McKenzie.
Yes, I have a few comments, so it might take me a couple of minutes, but. One thing that. I have done is I canceled my, my trip to cap to cap this year because of our, just based on our. Report from our city manager last time on our financial projections for our sales tax revenue. Is looking. Like it's going to be quite a bit lower than we are anticipating for the year 25% or would know, she said 35%. By June, so I'm, I'm for myself is to cancel my trip to cap to cap and. I would like to just suggest that maybe the other members who are on that list to go might consider canceling that trip. So that's between the three of us. I know the mayor has a sponsorship for his trip, so that wouldn't fall into this category, but that. Between the, the other three of us, it's $15,000. That we might be able to put toward something else in our budget that's a little more necessary at this time. Possibly even considering using that toward.
Ms. McKenzie, you're cutting out, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You repeat that again.
That you heard.
Maybe the last sentence.
Okay, uh, what did I say? I was just saying that maybe the, you know, that's what I've, the choice that I've done and I've just. Leaving it to the other members to consider whether or not you might like to also make that choice, but. I got an email today from the cap to cap representative who said that. Until April 30th, you can make changes without extra costs, but after that, there's going to be some change cost to that. So I'm not sure what that is. But there's something to consider. The another item is that I know there was some conversation about possibly the city council doing something for the graduates. And with those signs and. My, my thought is that probably doing blind fundraiser with a grad or. Some other service organizations might be a better fit for doing that project, but something that possibly the five of us could do together. Would be maybe putting an ad in the Appeal Democrat and I found out that. We can get a half a page ad for $445. And we might be able to get a smaller one for less than that, but. If the five of us wanted to pitch in and do an ad in the Appeal Democrat. We could do that and we can talk about that later, but I wanted to leave that to you. To consider as well.
And what's the ad, let's say just to congratulate the graduates?
Yeah, we could do that. We were talking about, but we wouldn't take it out of the city budget, but if we wanted to personally donate something that would be from us to the graduates. That's just an, an idea. You guys can let me know what you think about that, but we have until June 9th. To make that decision and to place an ad with. The other thing I'd like to say is that. Last Friday, well, many of you saw it, we, there's a COVID-19 relief task force that's in form to address the. The needs at the food bank and the food bank pantries. And so there was a, we did a drive-through donation. Drive last Friday and there was, I just wanted to give the report on what was raised and what went to the food bank and to the pantries. There was over 42,000 pounds of food donated. From the community and 31, a little bit over $31,000 donated. So it was really successful and so that. All that, all those resources are going to our local food bank and to pantries in. Yuba City and Marysville and in the Yuba Sutter area. So. There was a lot of families there who were coming, look, actually looking for food as well. So it was a real. Kind of a. Stark reality of the situation that a lot of our, our community members are in because of not having work and so. It was a little sobering. And so I, I wrote a check. So there were some challenges that had gone out. I'm right, wrote a check to the, to the drive and so the challenge goes out to you guys as well. I know some of the other council members and. And supervisors had contributed. So it's my job to challenge you guys. You can, you can talk to me, find out where you can do that. The other thing I'd like to say is that I was just being encouraged. I talked to James Gallagher and I've talked to. Sacks a little bit and I also talked to. Anderson about our progress in getting our businesses back. With their doors open again. And I know that our current, our order for our community is. Scheduled to end. And I know that there's task teams working toward developing plans so that we can get our businesses. Back online, we can get our community opened up for recreation and for gatherings. So. I was really encouraged by, to see that James Gallagher and Jim Nielsen and are helping to represent us before the governor. And making an appeal for our, our more rural counties that we can, we might have different circumstances that if he was considering extending. The order in the rest of the state, he might consider. A different way for us as rural communities. So happy to see that. We're all working toward that goal together. Hopefully we'll be seeing our business stores opening and. Just another week and a half, two weeks. So that's encouraging and so I hope. Hope everybody's doing well out there with that and I want, just want our community to know that we're really. Thinking about you all the time and glad that we've been really healthy here for the most part and I'm very. Very much attentive to the fact that. We want to see those businesses opening up as soon as they possibly can. So I know we're all working on that and so I want to thank everybody who's been. Working on that project, but I'm encouraged by what I've seen. In that regard. So thank you. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hudson?
Yes Stephanie, I'm, I'm going to agree with you on the, the last part of your comments there and I, I appreciate the work that you put into it for. Talking to the people and being on the task force and I too am very interested in getting the businesses open back up soon. Understanding that government's orders and so forth. I think everybody knows my feelings on those and so I'm not going to go into that too much, but I would like to thank. You know, Yuba County Supervisors and Brendan Stranex of the E D C and Jonathan here at the city on what's been going on with. Helping out a few of the businesses with their lending program they started. I've talked to Marty about something similar and we'll, we'll put that on the agenda for us to talk about next city council meeting. I just want to thank everybody for their work and their patience and their moral support of just, you know. Give me the positive thoughts on these crummy days that we've had the past few weeks. So. Thank you and let's hope for this stuff to end peacefully and soon.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Simmons?
Yes, Mayor, I don't have much to talk about since I've been confined for the last 25 days, it seems like. Fishing is lousy right now. They dropped the water. Everybody's pumping water in the rice field, so. That's something for sportsmen to know. The fish have moved down toward Teesdale. And other than that, everything's working pretty good. I. I just hope that everybody stays safe and we get this city back to where it's supposed to be, to get these businesses going. But we have to be very careful. Only takes one to bust that wide open. So. Let's don't forget that the separation and staying home as much as you can should not affect the business. They can open up the businesses and they go in there with. Masks on and rubber gloves and buy their commodities and I'll eat one of the hamburgers some, from. Jesus, from. The bar, the bar that sits to my left and use, use rubber gloves and have a hamburger. I guess that's what you want to do. But Godspeed all of you and thank you for your support. Sorry, I can't be out there among it, but. I'm in that age group that not like you guys, young and vibrant. So my comment is that to stay safe and be careful. And please wear your mask and make sure you stay, don't get more than 10 people together. Basketball games and all that's got to be over with for a while. Isn't that right Stephanie? Thank you mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Bette Cavoli?
Just a couple of quick things to follow up with Councilman Hudson and Councilman. With Stephanie. The task force that we're all on, meaning the mayor, myself, Marty and the chief. They have put together task force to start figuring the procedures, how to get us opened up. So it's, we're supposed to. Well, the hope was that by the end of this week, we would have some procedures put in place. How to start opening up. So just an update on that. One thing I wanted to bring up, I got a call from a contractor this weekend. This doesn't happen very often, but I got a call, a call from a contractor that wanted to let me know. How great it was to work with Ellen. Getting a building permit, especially in these times when the difficulty with. City all closed and everything going on, but he couldn't speak enough of how well it went that he worked with Ellen. And I passed that on to Jonathan and let him know that, that you know, that's a reflection on him too. So again, you know, we don't hear a lot of those nice, good things. So it was a real, it was really nice to hear something pleasant. Thanks.
Thank you. I, I do want to just kind of give you a quick update. I did have a conversation with Dr. Revellis after. We passed those resolutions to get those applications through. In collaboration with Yuba County Office of Ed, I had a conversation with him and his deputy. To talk about kind of their thoughts about. They want to engage the city on. On finding ways that we can expand recreational opportunities for young people and for our youth. So a couple of things that came out of it is they, they are interested in seeing the council. Maybe even considering putting some type of line item on our budget. It doesn't have to be a huge line item, just something that. Would signal to the Yuba County Office of Ed that we're interested in, in partnering and finding ways that we can. Promote recreational activities for youth. There's no, there's no amount other than they just would like to see something. I know in the past we've worked, well, mostly volunteered through the N P O A and. Fire associations. We did like the, the summer leagues and stuff where we opened up the gym at the, at the middle school and they volunteered to go and. And they opened up for the young people and that was actually. Pretty popular. We had a lot of young people showing up for pizza and basketball. So that was pretty cool. So. Whatever that may look like, I think that they, they're extending their hand and they're asking us to consider finding a way that we can put something. In our budget that would go towards. Recreational activities. Saying that, I think there is opportunity, especially for. Our revenue that, that we're proposing that, you know, we're currently going through our measure, our cannabis tax. That, you know, finding a way that we can dedicate some of those dollars specifically for recreational opportunities. I do agree with. Councilman McKenzie, that that might be an opportunity for us to not only show that the benefits. To, as we generate these revenue. As you know, the Prop 64 proposal that they're submitting is actually a part of the cannabis dollar, so. Is actually a part of the cannabis dollar. So those dollars would be also the cannabis dollars to. Provide those recreational opportunities. So it, so anyway, so that was the conversation that I had with Dr. Ravelis. What I also suggested to him. Was that. Because if, if we expand any type of recreational activities, we'll probably need facilities. To, you know, he's, you know, in his mind, he would love to do some after school, additional after school programming. And I know that in one of our Prop 68 proposals that we, we didn't get funded for our parks, I believe the one in. Miners Park, I think included kind of a community small meeting center as well. So things like that, I think. Would, would go a long way. So what I said is possibly. Have them take a look at the, the proposals, at the, at the grant proposals that we put together, have them take a look at it and see if they can possibly enhance. That, that proposal and then maybe resubmit it. So I think they're interested in looking at, we, we submitted. Finding ways that maybe they can enhance it through their collaboration efforts and their programming efforts to add to, to that proposal. So. I've shared that with Marty and I believe she's spoken to. Yuba County Office of Ed. I know they exchanged, I, I think she also sent the, the proposals out to them and they're taking a look at it. So. We might resubmit those Prop 68 grants with, with the addition of their thoughts and, and so on. So. I also. Had a conversation with Jonathan and I've been sending him information as I get it from, but the League of Cities have been very involved in trying to support. Local municipalities. There is some CDVG money. In additions with your First Cares Act, the federal government. There, there was some dedicated money for our community development block grounds that's going to go to cities like ours. So we'll have some dollars and we'll be able to go after some additional dollars to maybe support some of the things that Councilmember Hudson is looking for. Where maybe we can have a pot of money from a CDVG dollar. So there's some monies possibly available and I hope that Jonathan's listening or Marty's listening. That we can find some dollars to put in a pot that we can support our smaller businesses. And I know that Jonathan's also been pretty actively involved trying to find ways and ideas to support local businesses as we move forward. Into this next stage of opening businesses. I did have a conversation before. This meeting with Assemblymember Gallagher. Called because as you probably saw in the news on Sunday, Sutter County. Was asking a question of, of writing a letter to, to the governor. Asking them to allow the county to put their own plans towards opening up businesses. I thought Gallagher. I give him credit for taking the leadership and saying, why don't we. Slow it down a little bit and try to engage all the different counties in our rural northern state. Region and ask the cities and the counties to come together and have a, a kind of a, a broader request to the governor. And so. I saw the letter that they're looking at, sending to the governor. I think it's reasonable. It's not. It's, I think it's in the middle in, in many ways that. It, it, what they're asking is a responsible way to move forward to start opening up our businesses. It would be a local. Driven. You know, and, and, and that we would kind of, you know, do, do it through us and also with the help of our health officers. But they're including Colusa, Buick County. Tahima and some other counties in Northern California that have kind of the uniqueness of being rural. Counties and who might not have as many numbers in, in cases as maybe other more populated areas. So I thought the letter was reasonable and I think it's going to get a lot of support from a lot of the cities and counties. So. I give Assemblymember Gallagher. Credit for taking the leadership and bringing all the different groups together and I appreciate him calling me directly. To talk about it. I think there is definitely a need to balance. There are a lot of fears out in our community. There are, I think part of this puzzle has to include protecting our high-risk populations. So to assure that they're safe, but at the same time, helping and supporting and lifting our local small businesses. Getting them going. It may look a little bit different, but I know that our businesses are creative and, and, and. And if we can support them and, and making them stronger and giving them a push in some shape or form. I think we'll be ready to do that. So I appreciate both what Jonathan's doing and what Marty's doing to kind of get us ready. And the committees meet. Monday, Wednesday and Friday. And there've been sometimes some lively discussions, but I think they've been respectful discussions. So. I think City Marysville is well represented in the sense that. I thought Bruce's questions are great and I don't know about my comments. Sometimes maybe people take me the wrong way, but I'll say it anyway. But, so we just kind of move forward with that. With that. I don't have any other comments with that. I just wanted to give you guys an update on that and give the public kind of the knowledge. That the best thing that is happening, I think, is getting our two communities. Together. We're working well together. We are. We are definitely merging as, as one community between the two counties and. And so we'll see the work, the work coming out of those subcommittees to open up, to provide guidance system business should be coming. Sometime this week. That's our expectation that we'll start seeing some of the draft guidance and stuff. So. We'll, we'll, we'll definitely keep you guys informed on what those are. With that, we have our next meeting on May 5th. Can't believe May is already here. And so our journalist meeting, thank you all for participating. This meeting is adjourned.
Bye, you guys. Have a nice one.
Thank you.
Bruce, you look better in the dark.
I know.
Only thing is, is beard shines. He puts that sparkle in it.